You would be a good window to spin on this.
Are you, are you ready, Matt?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, we have roll call.
Here, present.
Jerry?
You're not a board, you're not a commissioner.
Well, because I haven't done one of these before, I don't know who is chairman.
Well, that's.
We don't.
We don't, there's no, there's nobody right now.
Right.
Okay.
We have to make, we have to decide that.
Okay.
Commissioner Rushton?
Present.
Commissioner Bonnet?
Here. All right, so we should stand to reflect the allegiance in the home of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So do we, we have our agenda, I just want to add number five would be pinwheels.
Just carry it class. You don't want to talk about it, so.
Okay. For discussion?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, on the, it could be on the action items too.
Okay.
Henry, this is just number five, so. So I move we approve the agenda as submitted or as amended?
I'll support.
Y'all was in favor?
Aye.
All right, now first thing is, oh, public comment, we have none?
And since we don't have a chair, by protocol, either the clerk or I have to chair this part of the meeting, so I will open up the floor for nominations for chairman.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate Will Bonnet for chair.
Is there a second for that nomination?
I don't think we need a second for that.
I was gonna nominate you.
I know, that's why I got my, that's why I got my hand up there first.
It's going on a little.
Okay.
I recognize Commissioner Rushton first.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the nomination?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Bonnet, congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, so now we have a review of the legal opinion and policy.
Yeah, you have a copy of the opinion from Matt Norford. It's what I sent to you on the last, I say three copies. Because I wrote, I called when we started this to get copies that they've done this. And at one time it was common for counties to have policies. The problem with that is, you have a policy in place, and then you have to strictly abide by it, and people found loopholes and have taken county governments to court. Well, you let this and this group do it, therefore you have to do it. So he's actually recommending not just for us, but for all counties, that we basically the process that we do, have a request come in writing, form a committee to review it, make a recommendation for board, and have the board make the decision.
But that does not disallow some sort of a landscape plan?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Right.
No, 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 that's, that's kind of separate.
That's a separate thing. So if the board should so choose to create some sort of a landscape picture, maybe with a general.
That's perfectly fine.
Yeah.
Let's just say, I'm just throwing out, you designate a certain area where you let, where you would consider it. That's perfectly fine.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, because we've only got so much room up here by the door. I mean, and then the other thing that we have to take into consideration is maintenance. Maintenance, there's a lot of things I think we have to consider here.
If you look at that thing I think I sent you a couple weeks ago that the Park and Reps are working on?
Yes.
That's a prime example of how not to do it.
Exactly. So I'm sure you're gonna address that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But I can tell you when I worked at MC, it got to the point where the college disallowed any other plaques, because the concern started like a cemetery memorial, because there was plaques and trees in honor of everybody over fifty years.
Right.
And pretty soon this, where do you draw line?
Well, and how many plaques do we have out there already?
I think for just Mr. Gallagher, I think that tree was.
Just his.
No, but I mean, you, you look around at all the plants and all those stuff.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there's probably twenty plaques out there, I think.
And I think at least since I've been here, the only request that came to the board that was approved was for the County Vinsfield bench at Old Sappers. I can't remember of any other requests that was approved, can you, Jerry?
No, just the tree, I remember years ago, they made a tree by the chapel. Someone wanted a plaque in the ground, and the tree passed away before it even, it was like an eight footer, and it was so dry over there.
Right.
And I can't remember who that was, but I know there was some issues with the chapel.
Let me ask you a question about the plaques that are out here. I assume, I don't pay attention to that, but I assume they're in the garden area.
Yeah, the MSU.
So, does that interfere with your?
No.
Okay, because.
No, they're out of the lawn area.
It's out of the lawn area.
Yeah, we're good there.
However, if a tree goes in and it's got, I would assume, a certain amount of mulch around it initially, I think where, if we allow a plaque and where that's placed would be, could be a problem for the maintenance department as far as the mowers and getting it tangled up in the mowers or whatever.
And the expectation then of maintaining mulch around it year to year to year to year, and reading, it could become more of an issue that way.
Right.
If we have multiple things out in the yard.
Right.
Well, here's the challenge, if you allow one nonprofit to plant a tree, how could you signal to any other type of nonprofit?
You can't.
Right.
That's the challenge.
So.
Unless you have a strict policy or you have a designated area, you know, that you only allow it at this site. That goes back to your idea.
We do our landscaping and come up with, there's five things we'll allow putting in.
And only these donations. Yeah, or you could, yes, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah.
So maybe, you know, addressing whether we allow the tree today or not is really not the question.
Right.
Maybe the question is, we need to implement some sort of a plan that would be a long-term plan where we say, okay, we're only gonna allow growth or plantings in these areas, period. That's it. And just, you know, and then we can decide thereafter on if we are going to accept a tree as a gift, and.
Well, I mean, that's where we're on, we're on policy. I mean, do we want to have a policy or do we want to just do, you know, and then the other thing is a landscaping plan? I mean, our policy would be our landscaping plan?
Well, as suggested, they don't recommend a policy.
Yeah.
You simply have a, we could have a procedure that any request come through this committee for recommendation that goes to the full board.
Yeah.
And that doesn't make the difference if it's at the parks or on this campus. Because I think you want, you want control.
Oh, I would definitely.
So, so even if somebody asks for something for the parks, it comes to the building and grounds?
And that's past present, that's what we did with County Vinsfield.
Okay.
Because I think you want to control what goes in the parks.
Yeah.
Right, so our policy would be that then?
Yeah, our procedure, whether legal woman boards or anybody else that wants to do it.
Exactly.
Is what is the process? Like this pinwheel request we were just about to get, that just came, it was an email that just got here. The process, the procedure would be, okay, put your request in writing, go through Bills and Grounds Committee for review and then a recommendation to the full board.
Mm-hmm.
And that way you have flexibility on a case by case.
And that's basically our policy.
It's a procedure.
A procedure.
You don't need a policy, yeah, that's our procedure.
Okay.
Okay, I like that idea.
And that way you have flexibility.
And we also can hear from the gift givers, you know, and because they may not understand all the issues, like with the tree, we have to worry about infrastructure underground, infrastructure above ground, you know, the additional costs for maintenance, all of those things. Wind, look what happened when we had the straight winds, you know, if that tree should come down, what will that affect on our campus, you know, what's our cost down throughout? And I equate that to my kids who want to gift me a dog.
Yeah.
It's the same thing, you know? I tell them, consider the ramifications of the gift before you give the gift.
Someone may want to plant a tree, someone may want a bench, someone may want to put a rock, you know?
So where do you put a marijuana plant?
Or you never know, or a pinwheel garden, you know?
Right.
So I think we need to have the flexibility.
Yeah.
And as long as we're consistent with Matt said.
Okay.
You don't have to prove, but as long as we have a process and we treat every request the same, then we're perfectly fine. We have the right to say no, we have the right to say yes. But the minute you start putting parameters in it, let's just say we designate some spot out there.
Yeah.
So if you let one nonprofit put a tree, you better be able to justify every other legitimate nonprofit to plant a tree there.
Yep.
Do we need a motion for that?
You can just recommend that to the full board.
Okay.
So I think what you're saying is, any request has to be in writing with specific detail. It needs to then be reviewed by the Bills and Grounds Committee, and the committee will then make a recommendation for the full board for consideration.
And that'll be our process?
Yes.
Okay.
Jerry, you agree with that, makes sense?
Just that's great.
That's for any county-owned property.
Protect counties interested.
Sure, because, I mean, after all, it's gonna be your department that has got to care for this, you know, over time, and that presents problems in itself.
And I can write, I can draft a procedure for the board to review it.
Okay.
If you'll.
Yeah, because that's what I was thinking, yeah, but if you did that, that'd great.
This is.
Thank you.
Something comes up, it seems, once or twice a year, someone wants to donate.
So, so I would make a motion that we have, we do, we set up a procedure for, for addressing any donations that would want to be placed on county property.
I'll support that.
And that includes apartments?
Yes, any county property.
Yeah, I'll put that in though.
Yeah. All of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll make that recommendation to the board. All right, so there, there we have a procedure, not a policy.
Yes.
Now, we want to look at the campus, Jerry, do you want to go over that? Is there anything we need to know about the campus?
Could you pass one of those?
As in the grounds itself, there's nothing, nothing has changed. The black and white doesn't do justice, I wish you could have colored it in, but you can pretty much see where the trees are.
Jerry, which year was it, I see the year got cut off.
The year?
It says four twenty-one something. Is this, I think when the campus was, I think was, it hasn't been updated since.
Probably.
The campus has been built, right?
Yeah.
Well, four twenty, it, it was in, I laid this out when we started planting stuff, it was in April.
But was it when they were building this?
Two thousand five, four, I should say, started and worked our way to the east here.
So nothing has been really updated since that time, right? In terms of the physical plan?
No major additions except by the wellhouse, but that's not on there right now, that's not a condition. Just some trees up there. So a change, doesn't show on here, of course, is the garden, as you can see in the front of the courthouse, and the two walkways.
Right, add back your question to that.
The trees, the trees, the trees are in place though.
Right, and that's in this area here, I'm not sure where it is, on the map.
Okay, which area for?
For the garden.
Well, the garden is, you see where it shows in front of the courthouse, the kind of the driveway?
I'll just come over there.
This here?
Oh, yes.
That's the entrance here.
That's what you're talking about.
And the sidewalk kind of goes like this.
Yes, I was thinking that you were talking about the garden that's.
Oh, oh, the vegetable garden.
The vegetable garden.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's up here.
It's up on top of this hill up here by the property.
That's what I thought.
Once condensed, everything is hard to see.
I was confused.
See, I would call it the landscaping instead of the garden.
Yes.
But you're talking all around the front of the building and the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Correct.
And this over here, they maintain this as well, do they not? Oh, no, it's right here.
Well, that's lower level, that's all concrete.
It's concrete, it swings around.
This one.
Here, but here and here, yeah.
In the front, you see those.
My map's straight.
It doesn't show the walkways either.
No, it doesn't on this map. I don't have that version.
Yeah, because there are those two walkways, one that moves through the garden, what he's called the garden area.
Yeah, kind of goes through here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so there, there, I mean, it says Newport Plum, you see, they.
Right here, and then the one.
And those are all very, are they very, they're not very big trees at all.
Small.
And that, you know, so they're not gonna grow up and fall on the building very much. The only one that might be would be that maple.
That's gonna be, what, that corner? Yeah, that would be up right out here.
Yeah.
And that white birch there.
Right.
Do we know how tall that, that maple's gonna grow?
Probably eventually sixty feet.
That's a sixty footer.
Eventually, yeah, it would be, it's far enough from the building. In fact, they had a white pine right in the corner.
Oh, yeah.
Put one in there and cut it down, because, you know.
Yes, be right against the building.
These trees were Zimmerman landscaping, or they laid out where we should put these different trees, and then, then we put them in.
Has anything been added in terms of landscaping sensibility open? I can't think of anything.
Other than the pine, have any of the trees died?
Just one on the back side where the porch is of the courthouse, directly, straight back in the front of the courthouse to the back where the, there's three, Washington, there's a tulip tree, and then there's two others. You see right up in the porch?
Yeah, Washington.
Creeping, no, I'm sorry, that's the wrong name.
A sweet gum?
Washington Hawthorne is in the middle, and then a tulip tree on the left. The one on the right.
Is a sweet gum tree.
Yeah, that passed away. So I planted another, and I can't remember what it was, a small little bit, but the so concentration.
Oh, you already planted one to replace it?
Yeah, that's all grass.
Because I was thinking if we lost anything else, we could look at, if there's a tree dead that could be replaced.
I usually do that if there is, but I've been fortunate so far.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's all grass hill, basically, it's right up, it's not even in the yard.
Right.
Sets over the sides, so.
So it probably wouldn't be a good place anyway.
In fact, that creeping lily turf, you see, I have those two long ones.
Yeah.
That was plants I bought, I tillered that, four feet wide, tillered on the hill. Really worked to figure it was gonna grow up, well, you can't even find it now. It's all black grass, everything just literally.
Overcame it.
Oh, just, I got a deal on it, it was literally nothing for it, but tried.
What I don't see here is the area for the veterans.
That's correct.
And.
That, like I said, I'm just going off the maps.
Yeah, wasn't that added after?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that was, that was, yeah, that was done after the whole campus was done. Yeah. And that got, that was a kind of a fiasco too.
But there's been nothing added there since, there's been no.
No, I had two trees out in the yard, behind the more, the open yard, back there, and those kind of were just gotten away. They've.
I guess my point is, there's been no approval of anybody or any group or any organization of doing that.
Maybe one.
Right?
Correct, at this time, that may be a focus down the road, you know, for that, because you've got that open grass area back there. But the two trees that were there that did, they died. And that was before irrigation, but it's just, like you say, you put separate trees in, and also it changes the whole maintenance procedure out there.
So as far as land irrigation on campus, do we have irrigation down by the veterans?
Yes, that's all irrigated.
That's all irrigated for the area that is mowed, I assume, is irrigated?
All of it.
All of it?
Yes.
Anything beyond that is not?
No, it stops right as you're going down the hill, the memorial's on your right.
Yep.
You know, there's telephone pole and a green box right there, ditch on the right, that's where it stops. It does not go up towards the sign or anything.
Okay.
That's not irrigated up there.
Right, that's what I wanted to know.
Down the, this side, it's irrigated, the trees are irrigated.
Pretty much where you're mowing is what I'm thinking.
Correct, correct.
Okay. So to put a tree anywhere else, the viability of the tree would be in question?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, unless they paid for the landscaping, I mean, if, if we want to do that. I mean, as far as I look at the campus, it seems to have landscaping already everywhere it's supposed to be.
It's pretty fun.
Yeah. So, so if, if, if we are willing to look at putting this memorial tree somewhere, it's gonna be non-visible, really. You'd have to put it down by the, you know, where it's not irrigated or something, because I don't, otherwise, we're gonna be crowding what we already have. I don't know, what, what do you?
Well, around the jail, there's not many trees, they don't want trees close to the jail.
Right.
So even though we have open yard, that's not available, I think to do.
Well, and I'm sure they don't want to put their memorial by the jail.
No, I would, I assume they want something very visible, right?
Right, right.
With a plaque on it, I guess.
Yeah, well, they do want a plaque with it, I know that.
Yeah.
Your target, your target spot. They walk around the veterans, they would be tired, they would be looking at that open yard.
That's the only area that I personally had considered for several reasons.
It's away from the building structures. I wasn't sure about the irrigation, but to me.
Can be done, pardon me.
To me, that was the only logical place to put it, but.
Could be done.
Before I even go there, I would like to move forward with our procedure and developing some sort of a landscaping plan, an area, if we're going to allow, you know, donations. But I, I really think that we need to seriously look at the impact of the donation, and I go back to the dog gift. You know, because a gift has consequences, you know, financially, and at its stress and strain on your department, and so.
You could also look at the idea, okay, we could, let's just say, we decided to put some trees out in that yard down below, the open field, so to speak. And that brings a question of what county, how many? Do we go, do we create a zone area with the path, you know, all that, and it starts coming?
Or do you want to just say no to the request and have that in the hands of the commissioners? If you, if you need more trees down there, let the board decide where and what type of trees.
Yes, I did do a little research on different trees. And for the most part, the larger trees, which to me is not conducive to the, the area here, to me, I just don't see where we have them up here. Putting a big tree down there, I think, has its own problems. So I was looking at smaller trees with maybe some color to them. But then you have got the droppings from the trees, because it's usually flowers or seed pods, and, and then are we gonna have all these other little trees popping up? You know, because of the.
Root system.
Yeah.
Suckers coming up.
And which is gonna create more problems. So I was really torn on that.
I, I would like to see if we have a landscaping, you know, or have, get a landscaping drawing of the memorial down there.
Mm-hmm.
We should, I like this one, and I think, I mean, I don't see a place where we really can put a tree here. And maybe we can look at that and see if there is a place there, even though I guess I'm leaning towards just saying no.
I am too, but here's what I would like to say. If the county should have a tree that fails, an existing tree that fails, we would consider a donation for a tree to be put back in that same spot once it has gone through our procedure.
Sure.
Yeah, well, I think we come up with a policy we have, so you can do that.
Exactly.
Because it is a requested, we say this tree died.
Yeah.
Would you consider a replacement? So it would fall in line to what we're saying.
The question is, would you want to replace it with the same, or like?
Well, that's.
Well, it would come before the committee.
Yeah.
It'd be cool, it'd be fine.
Well, I don't like the situation, if you look at what's happened at the Lansing Capitol, so they put the nativity at Christmas. The courts are ruled, you can have nativity scene, but you have to open everyone else. So you go to Lansing, and you see the atheist group now has this thing, the, the people that practice witchcraft.
Oh, sure.
They have the right to put, they, they all, and you go down there, and any day during Christmas, you see all these other things there, because they have the right.
Right.
And that's why I want to point, because the minute we let one group put a tree in, a nonprofit, we open ourselves up to all.
All nonprofits.
Now, like I say, keep it, as we are proposing.
Simple, yeah.
Case by case, going through the board.
Yeah. But I think in the meantime that, you know, we need to put that procedure in place, and to, you know, have the information available to the buildings and ground committees so that we can make an educated decision on where, if we want to designate an area, and then.
I like your idea of being selective of the tree type, what the trees.
Oh.
You know, because we do have one someplace that gets a little.
Stick.
And it's like, oh, you know, something to clean up or a mold, and it's just being shot out.
Right, because if somebody wanted, wanted to put like a willow tree, they are so messy and such.
Absolutely not. They grow to be huge, they're very messy, they're dangerous in.
We have one of those down below, but we have this little one out here, the Joe Deegan tree.
Yeah.
It's got a little, but it can be trimmed, it doesn't.
Right.
There's one down by the pond, if you go down the hill to the left, and that's a MSU, it's a hybrid black willow, so I put it by the pond down there, let it go.
Yeah.
You know, throw it out pond.
I didn't know it had a Joe Deegan tree.
Yeah, this little one up here that's got the, that's a little.
Well, that's a little decorative, that's it.
Yeah.
And it fits into the landscape.
Okay.
It's not really a memorial tree, it's part of the landscape.
Yeah.
So Jerry, can we get this updated? Do you know who did this plan?
We can make it more.
Do you know who did this plan?
I just laid everything out.
Yeah, but someone obviously put it in.
No, Laurel did that, she made it small, I had the big maps.
Yeah, but who made the original map?
Who was the architect?
We just took the architect's.
Who was the architect?
Site layout, I don't know if it was.
Well, we just, instead of starting from scratch and painting someone, we just update this.
Yeah.
It'd be a lot easier, that's why.
Yeah, well, Jerry's saying, he drew all this on here.
Yeah, but someone did it.
Yeah, somebody did the plan here, yeah.
So we can, we'll take it, and we'll, we'll get this updated.
Yeah.
Well, and, and it could be another page, but the, because that's, we have the drawings from that too, I know that.
Yeah, we want to be able to read.
Yeah, what probably, what I may suggest too, is get one of those overviews of the property in color, that you can see, you know, down.
How much does that cost, Jerry? Exactly.
No, it should be, we should be able to get right off our.
Well, let's see what we can do here.
Okay.
That'd be real helpful work.
Let's see what, let's see what we can do in terms of that.
Okay, so.
Have Bones kind of drone too, if he's.
All right, so, so.
I, I'm gonna make the motion that we move forward with a landscape plan to give the tools to the county board and the building and grounds to be able to make a informed decision.
I'll second that.
Do that.
Mm-hmm.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And number four, at this time, I would like to make the motion that, no. We're not supposed to make a negative motion.
Well, you can respectfully decline, you could recommend that.
I would respectfully decline the donation at this time.
Yeah, well, I would say we, we can, we can, we can look at, well, when we get the landscape, if there is, but at this.
That's why I said, at this time.
Yeah, okay.
At this time, I respectfully deny the request for the tree planting.
But we, we don't.
At this time.
You recommend to deny.
Yes, I recommend to deny at this time. So, it will be an ongoing process.
Yeah. See, I wouldn't make that recommendation. I would just say, we are still reviewing it, and we're gonna make a recommendation at a later time.
Well, I didn't get a second.
Yeah.
So, my motion.
Well, we're, we're in discussion.
Take a chair.
You see what I'm saying?
You can say you're gonna withhold making decision until we complete the process.
Yeah, we get the layout, we get the thing, and then we can say the same thing about the pinwheels.
Oh.
What's a pinwheel? Oh, you're cutting out.
That's coming up, yes.
That's a good question.
Okay, so.
So, I'm, I'm just saying, at this time, we're reviewing it, we're looking for another layout, we're looking, considering that the, the veterans' campus and all of that, we're considering, you know, replacing the trees, that when they die, you know, one has been replaced, you know, at this time, and.
And, and all that will be part of the landscape plan.
Yes.
So, it makes sense.
You know, and so, so we're not making a decision now for or against, but we're keeping them informed in the discussion.
Okay.
You know, so they can see where, what we're leaning towards, and that if, if this, if we let this go, we can't deny other nonprofits, and we've gotta be aware of that.
Right.
And we don't know about that. So, does that make sense?
Perfect.
We just give them a, a review of what we've decided, what we're gonna, and we'll just plan another meeting.
Really, you can have another meeting then, after we get this.
Yeah.
And, and the thing is, you know, the concern was the timeframe for planting in the spring. This may have to be held off to, for a fall planting or a spring planting next year.
If we approve it, yes.
If we approve it.
Yeah.
But really, that's a side issue. You should have your policies in place first before you react to anybody.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to say.
You're on your timeline.
Right, right.
But it was brought up.
Well, I know, but I'm saying, you treat them, aren't you, they're with the same.
Right.
It can be in the fall, too, you know, they want it just for August, but that's not.
Well, if they wanna bring professional in water, it could be done really at any time.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point.
The ar months are the best times.
And that's what I thought. If, if it happens, I think we should get sprinkling to it, and that would be part of the cost, if we're not putting it in a place where it's already sprinkled.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Well, let's update this.
Yeah.
Let's get a procedure in place.
Yeah.
Let's get this updated, then we can have a discussion.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, so then that, that would take care of number four, and then we have number five is the pinwheels. Do you wanna read that email?
If we can go back.
Sure, sure.
To number four.
Okay.
Because we've discussed the tree, however, we have not discussed the plaque.
Okay, well, if there's no tree, there's no plaque.
You can do both, once you have a plan.
I wouldn't, we wouldn't, it can't be any bigger than any of these out here, I would say, if it's a plaque.
Okay.
As part of it, once again, they would have to improve my policy.
Right.
Yeah.
Size and the wording.
Yeah.
Size, wording, and location.
Yeah, well, which all would have to be improved by the.
Because location is important to the maintenance department.
Into existing vegetation that we have, too. Could be a.
Well, you wanna control the virgin, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, the size.
Type of tree that's gonna.
Size, wording, and location, or placement.
Which is all part of the process, they would like to go through.
Mm-hmm. I just don't want that to be skipped.
Next time, put a pine tree in, on the lawn someplace, and you know, the acidic, what happens to under a mider?
Same thing with an oak, you know, an oak tree?
Yeah.
I mean, there's acid or whatever it is, and it's every spring, it's a mess, plus the acorns.
Yeah.
No problem.
Yeah.
How it amends the soil, how the tree actually amends the soil is what you're referring to.
Well, if it's all over the parking lot, or.
My neighbors have a walnut tree, otherwise a mess.
Yes.
All that stuff in black.
It's a black walnut.
I've got three of them on my drive to Sutton Bay, you know, and even on, you can run over them with a truck, it still makes a mess.
Tree down below the back of the chemo is a black walnut.
Uh, the lumber is very valuable.
Got those out.
But it makes a mess. They're greater in the field somewhere, but not anywhere in the yard, especially my driveway's a mess.
I know, we have got one on our property, yeah. So, okay.
So, alright, so then that brings us to the pinwheels.
Yeah. I really don't know anything about this. I just read this email this morning. It's from Jordan Dean, that, I think it's your copy here, that sent to Lori McCross, wants to have a pinwheel garden on campus, month of April. I didn't, I'm guessing, when I think of pinwheel, I think those round spinning things?
Yes.
But I'm not sure what the purpose is, or the cause, or why April, or, it's from the Shogun's Advocacy Center. So, I'll respond back, say, give us more information, we're processing drafting a policy.
Right.
I don't think, I think we got precedent, you start to do that, and.
He would come to plant them right before April, and then I would collect them after the month is over.
Right.
Is he talking about plastic pinwheels?
I'm guessing, I'm, that's what I think of when I think of pinwheel.
Got it. So, that will be, we'll mention that, you know, and that's under consideration until, but we have to have our procedures and the landscape.
Example of why we need to have a process.
Right.
I agree, so.
Well, and I think it's a good example about, you know, when you talked about Benzie and the five oh one C three for, you know, their marijuana meetings.
Yeah.
And they have to, they have to allow them in Benzie School.
I, I was telling, well, there's a law that serves, like, Central High School, they allow nonprofits to use their facility. And a normal group wants to have a, they want to show a film and have a meeting, and the, and the school said, no, it's not appropriate. They sued, and they won, because their policy is, they allow nonprofits to use facilities, they're nonprofit.
So, they open the door to everything.
To everyone.
Yes.
Who's a nonprofit.
Policy did not have any, I mean, it was pretty, it's more.
Right.
Sure.
But.
Well, you know.
They lost.
Yeah.
Well, I can see why.
Well, parents are upset, you know, you're worrying, you're like, this group come into school and show a movie, it was after hours or anything, but.
Right.
The court said yes, so they're a nonprofit, they have the right. You, you allow nonprofits? You can do that, you better let everyone.
And the perception is, the community thinks that the school supports that particular issue.
Well, the poster said, you know, Benzie Central High School auditorium.
Exactly. Yeah.
They're gonna take that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so then, any other discussion items?
No.
Then first up.
Yeah, it is.
First up.
Any board comments? Any public comment?
So, we have this on the February agenda, we can give an update.
Like, do we wanna set a meeting for, in February for us, or let's?
Uh, if you want to, sure.
We just do it at the end of the month?
Can we coordinate with another meeting that we have going on here?
Sure.
I mean, I'm.
I'd like to do that.
I'm just asking, because.
We're having one on Monday.
Next Monday.
Yeah.
No, we could.
Nine o'clock is best for you right now.
Yeah. I mean, that's fine. Is that too early for you?
Well, let's do it after the board meeting, that would give me time to write the policy, and hopefully the board can agree, I'm not the policy, I wrote the procedure, the board can agree with the procedure.
Yeah.
If they don't, then we have a dialogue about that.
Changing it, yeah.
On the eleventh?
No, because we won't, well, yes, it's on the agenda on the eleventh and the eighteenth.
We have an executive on the eleventh?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Are you talking about the meeting on the tenth, or the?
Oh, no, I think afterwards. Let's get feedback from the board, what they think about this recommendation about the procedure.
Okay.
We're not in a time slot, Sharon.
Right, so it'd be after the eighteenth.
Okay.
And that way, we have the directions from the board, or approval from the board.
Right.
Not with Jerry, time to work on this.
Right, get the, the plan and get the, the memorial plan.
I'm thinking sometimes after the eighteeneenth.
Just draw your little circles on it, too.
I, that, that's kind of a busy week for me, so I have other board meetings.
It's fine.
Yeah, we're not, that's not.
But, you know, maybe the twenty-eighth.
Just have a couple dates.
Well, yes, dates now, that would work for you.
Well, unfortunately, I don't have.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll look the week ahead.
I don't have my new calendar in my.
Well, we'll just wait, then.
Yeah.
We'll look at some dates here, coming up here.
Tuesdays and Wednesdays are usually the days that I'm.
Okay, and what time is convenient for you?
I like ten o'clock myself.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to do it on Friday, if that's an easier day for you.
Yeah, any day, yeah, ten o'clock Friday would be good.
Well, let's shoot for the twenty-eighth, though.
Alright.
Twenty-third is the airport trip to Grand Rapids.
Oh.
So, let's go twenty-eighth?
Yeah, at ten o'clock. That'd be good.
Well, no, hold on, hold on, 'cause I do have some travel planned. Okay, that, I'll make that work.
Well, if we can, we can change it, obviously.
Yeah, right, I'm just saying.
Okay, we'll kind of shoot for that day, I'll say. Doug, it was time to get feedback from the board, to give Jerry time to look at the landscape plan. Makes sense, Jerry?
Yeah, this, well, this what you have there, there's a lot of architectural stuff in there that wasn't, so we just used that.
Maybe Ralph can help us, Herman, make it bigger, we can see it.
And less stuff in it.
Get the color photo phone, yeah. I think we could do all that in-house, probably.
There, I've got it on my phone.
Wow.
Ten o'clock, Building and Grounds.
You're high tech.
Yeah, yeah, I, I.
I, I don't, it's on my phone, but I just don't have my other, 'cause I just got out of those board meetings this week, haven't had the chance.
Well, go ahead and talk with.
Well, and travel right now is kinda on the down low because of all this coronavirus stuff going on, so I don't know if I even wanna travel, but my window for travel sometimes seems to get smaller and smaller. Go ahead, Mr. Chair, sorry.
I said, I said that the, the danger is extremely minimal in the U.S.
Well, it could be.
But it is.
It is right now.
Right, because they don't, but they don't know how long it's contagious.
Right. It is right now.
Yeah.
That's my point.
Right.
But by then, I'll know whether it's gonna be.
Or not, yeah.
So, I would move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
And we are adjourned.
Thank you. Good meeting.
You two have a second, give you there, give you an update.
Thanks, Jerry.
Appreciate it.